Good evening, everybody. This is Muriel Bowser, the mayor of Washington DC. And I want to thank you for joining us this evening on the reopen DC Town Hall. I want to thank you for your interest and participation. The purpose of this Town Hall is to hear from residents, workers, and employers about how we can plan a safe and strategic reopening of our city. We know that Washington DC went into this pandemic in strong standing. We also know, however, that COVID-19 has had devastating impacts on the district, our nation, and our world. To date, more than 4,000 DC residents have been infected by the virus, and we have tragically lost 205 of our neighbors. The health impacts have been particularly dire for our vulnerable seniors, residents of all ages with underlying conditions, and for African Americans in Washington DC. We know, for example, that even though African Americans make up roughly 46% of our city's population, they are accounting for about 80% of the lives lost to this virus. Still, I want to stress that the actions we have taken and the many sacrifices our community have made are making a difference. Today, we have far fewer cases than COVID-19 than what initial projections predicted we might have going into May. And it's not an exaggeration to say that staying home has indeed saved lives. Each day, you know that we report on data, the number of cases in our city, and one of the trends we are looking for is a sustained decline in the number of new cases each day. Specifically, one of the criteria to begin the process of reopening is to have 14 days of decreases in new cases. We are not there yet, and that is why we continue to call on Washingtonians to stay at home, except for when you are engaging in essential activities. So while we're not ready to open our city, we must have a plan in place for when we are. And that is why I put together the Reopen DC Advisory Committee. And what I have shared with our community and with the advisory community group is that our hope is that we simply won't just reopen, but we will reopen in a better, more equitable way. We also know that in addition to the health impacts this pandemic has had on our community, it has had a very substantial economic impact. It has closed vibrant businesses, driven 70,000-plus DC workers to file for unemployment, and has created a $700 million revenue gap in our current budget and even larger in our upcoming budget year. So together, we want to think about how to build a healthier and more equitable DC, how to reinvigorate our economy, and how we get Washingtonians back to school and work. As I mentioned, the health experts will tell us when we can reopen. But how we implement a phased reopening is a critical question in the charge of the Reopen DC Advisory Committee. We are fortunate that the Johns Hopkins Center for Health Security team has agreed to advise our efforts. The Reopen DC Advisory Group is full of distinguished and passionate district residents, representatives of our city, our nation, and our world, and they will play a critical role in helping me gather feedback from our community and experts in each sector. With that said, I want to thank Ambassador Susan Rice and Secretary Michael Chertoff for their willingness to step up and chair the Steering Committee. They are joining us online and will offer remarks in just a moment. I also want to thank the co-chairs of our Steering Committee, former mayors Adrian Fenty and Anthony Williams, as well as Council Chairman Phil Mendelson, Beverly Perry, CFO Jeff DeWitt, and former U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Assistant Secretary Nicole Lurie. And finally, I want to make sure that you all know that we have another means of collecting community feedback, and that is a survey that is on coronavirus.dc.gov/reopendc. So with that, I want to thank you for the sacrifices that you've made, the good ideas, and your willingness to roll up your sleeves to help us plan for the phased reopening of our city, when all of the health indicators indicate that the time is right to do so. I also want to thank my entire team. I'm joined today by many of them on the phone, by Andrew Trueblood, who is working with the Steering Committee, and all of the subcommittees, who is our Director of the Office on Planning. And with that, I want to turn it over to Ambassador Rice, who is a brilliant Washingtonian and leader in our community, and thank her for her leadership. And I'll go to you now, Ambassador Rice.
Ambassador Rice, I think you might be on mute.
You're absolutely right. Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Madam Mayor. Your response to the coronavirus outbreak has been strong, fact-based, and effective. And I have no doubt that DC residents are better off because of the work of you and your team. I've had the privilege of living abroad and working on global issues, but Washington DC has always been my home, and it's where my husband and I have chosen to raise our two children. As a native Washingtonian, it's an honor to have been asked to help lead this effort to reopen my hometown. It's also an honor to work with Secretary Michael Chertoff, a great public servant and colleague, whose experience managing through emergencies will be very useful to this effort. I hope, too, that my years of federal service, in particular coordinating the management of crises and seizing transformative opportunities, will prove useful in this context as well. As the mayor said, our charge is to answer the question of how we reopen, so that once there's an answer to the question of when we reopen, district businesses, employers, employees, and residents will have clear direction. Our aim is to position our neighbors to get back to work and back to a pattern that approaches our daily routine as soon and safely possible. As co-chair of the Steering Committee, my role will be to coordinate the work of the Advisory Committee, ensuring that we're meeting the mayor's charge. I'll also be focused on, as the mayor has said, achieving a once-in-a-generation opportunity, not just to reopen our city, but to build a more equitable DC. I look forward to hearing your vital inputs and creative ideas. And thank you again, Mayor Bowser, for this opportunity to serve our city.
Thank you very much, Ambassador. Now I'd like to turn to Secretary Chertoff.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to echo what the ambassador said. Your leadership has been very, very important to the district. Although we've suffered some losses, it might well have been worse without your disciplined and intelligent approach to managing the way we respond to this particular virus. I'm also really delighted and honored to be working with Ambassador Rice, who does have a broad range of experience, not only here at home, but overseas in dealing with emergencies and crises. I also am a Washingtonian. I wasn't born here, but much of my life has been lived here. I've raised my children here, have neighbors and friends here, and my wife and I are very much invested in this community. Obviously, the challenge we have here is we want to reopen the city. We understand that people are suffering, that they're impatient, that they need to get back to work. At the same time, we want to make sure we do so in a way that does not reinvigorate the virus or put us in peril. And I think what the mayor has done is put together a program that will balance sound public health advice with an understanding of the compelling need to begin to get Washington back to work again. But I will also say, from my experience having dealt with multiple kinds of disasters, that this is an opportunity, not merely to go back to what was, but to make it better, to create better health opportunities, better employment opportunities, better educational opportunities for the people of this city. So at the end, we come out of this stronger and more well-prepared to deal with what is going to be a dynamic environment for a long period of time. It is a great privilege to work with the team the mayor has assembled. We are very interested in what the public is thinking, what you need, what you want, what your advice is. And that's why we're doing this Town Hall and this survey, to be interactive and to get the benefit of your wisdom. So with that, I'm delighted to turn it back to the mayor. And again, it's a privilege, as a fellow resident, to be working with you to make this city come back to life bigger and better than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you both for those comments and your willingness to serve. A reporter asked me the other day, how did you come about having the ambassador and the secretary serve? And I said, "They got a call, like many Washingtonians have gotten. This is your mayor, and I have an exciting opportunity for you to serve your city." And I was so delighted that they said yes, just like many people who have served on our 1,700 boards and commissions and have served just in a wonderful way to help lead our city and around various issues. So thank you very much. So I think I'm going to turn now to Andrew Trueblood. As I mentioned, he is the Director of the DC Office on Planning, and he is helping to coordinate and staff the Steering Committee and support all of the sector committees. So Andrew.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chairs. So today, we're excited to be able to have the opportunity to share a little bit about where we stand on the public health side, as well as the Reopen DC Committee, but as importantly, or more importantly, really, is to hear from you. So before we move on to a presentation from Dr. Nesbit about our current public health situation, I just want to remind everybody on the line that if you want to, if you have a question, please press zero, and you can connect with us and share your questions. So press zero if you want to have a question, or if you have a question come up for the next few presentations. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Laquandra Nesbit, the head of, or the Director of DC Health, to share a little bit about where the district's current epidemiological and public health metrics are.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Ambassador Rice, and Secretary Chertoff for the opportunity to be here with you all. And I'm so excited about the leadership that you all provide through this Reopen DC Advisory Group and the opportunity to work with you all as the district's health director and, as the mayor coins, DC's doctor. I hope you all don't mind, but I am going to do things a bit different than I originally planned. And instead of taking 10 minutes of time, I'm probably going to try to take closer to five, because we have a very robust and comprehensive website that the mayor has already mentioned, coronavirus.dc.gov, where we place data updates every day. And as the mayor has already mentioned in her talking points, we really have these goals of seeing some decreases in our trends over time, looking for two-week decline in the number of new cases, two-week decline in influenza-like illness and COVID-like illness in our community. As part of the win, we can begin to make some progress on reopening. So I'm just going to share, at a very high level, some data or some common terms that we talk about in the district, or how COVID has impacted the district, the pandemic has had an impact in the district at a very high level. This morning, the mayor does a press conference most days at 11:00 AM. We announced that the district has 4,106 cases. At the Health Department, we focus on something called an EPI curve to understand how the trends of COVID-19 are impacting the district. This data is slightly different than what we place on the coronavirus.dc.gov daily website, because that website shows us the number of laboratory confirmed cases, whereas this EPI curve helps us to understand the total number of cases that we have based on when people in our community had symptoms. If you look at our EPI curve, you'll note that the number of people in the district who had symptoms, we diagnosed our first case on March 7th. However, symptom onset for individuals began as early as in late February. The orange line depicts the total number of individuals in DC who report that their symptoms started on a given day. You may recall that we have reported on a daily high of new laboratory cases once at 245. However, the daily high for symptom onset on a given day is 161. That's just another way of us underscoring that there's sometimes a difference between the symptom onset day, the day that someone goes to their doctor for testing, and the date that we publicly announce testing results. At DC Health, we make decisions about trends in COVID-19 based on the EPI curve, not necessarily by the date of testing results. And there will always be a delay between the availability of testing results and the EPI curve, because of the time lag between when people go to the doctor when they have symptoms and when a healthcare provider or testing location may provide the testing results to us. In recent days, we have begun to notice a steady trend in the number of new cases, which can be indicative of us beginning to reach our peak or a flattening of the curve. However, we caution against people beginning to say that we're seeing a reduction in numbers because we're not yet ready to make that definitive statement. You'll see something that people also talk about called the reduction in case importations that we have in DC. We know that we are the center of commerce and governance in the district. We are the seat of the federal government, and very early on, we saw that so many of our cases were related to travel. And now, many of our cases are related to what we call local transmission. This has helped us make some changes in who we are offering testing to in the district. And because of that, we continue to make policy changes and widening our strategy in terms of who we are reaching. Beginning in late February, we had 22% of our cases, from late February to middle of March, were related to incident cases, I'm sorry, were related to travel. And now, most of our cases are related to this local transmission. Only 2% is related to local transmission. If you go to the next slide, there's something we talk about called the rate of transmission. This rate of transmission, or the basic reproduction number, is such that how many cases of COVID-19 can be caused by a single person being infected? For example, if the rate of transmission for COVID-19 in the district is six, then we would expect each new case of COVID-19 to produce six new secondary cases, assuming everyone is susceptible or not immune. When we calculated on April 24th the rate of transmission in the district, it was 1.15. So we're making some progress, because we want this number to be below one. We do some modeling in the district to be able to understand how we expect our trends to move over time. In these modeling scenarios, we create low, moderate, and high transmission scenarios. And when the mayor talks about our numbers are lower than what we expect, in this scenario, we expected on April 26th to announce approximately 614 new cases, and for our total cases to be 13,117. As you will note, as I mentioned today, we have 4,106 cases, and so our trends are lower than what we expected. Even though these trends are lower than what we expected, we still have not experienced two weeks of decline. Now, because we do this type of modeling in the district, it helps us get some insight in terms of how we should be reopening and how we should think about reopening. And as you know, we have a stay-at-home order in place. We've asked people to only leave the home for essential activities, such as going to grocery stores, going to work, going to their doctor's appointment, and getting essential exercise with their family. Because we do this type of modeling, it also allows us to understand what would happen if we were to move into a different state in the District of Columbia. The mayor's previous order for our stay-at-home order in emergency, where we're in our current posture, was set to expire April 24th. And we've extended our current posture to May 15th. And we really wanted to understand what would happen to the number of cases, hospitalizations in the district if we were to take actions at that time. What we know is that if we were to make some changes, we would increase significantly the number of cases in the district. And so we're able to make recommendations for a phased reopening in the district and what our metrics would look like. We know that based on the data we had at that time, when we did the modeling back in April, that opening up at the, at that time and in the middle of May, back then, based on the data that we had, would be too early. Now, that doesn't mean that we already know right now that opening up in the middle of May would be too soon. We're going to let the data and the science create, drive that decision-making. But opening up at the end of April would have created a second, larger peak. And if we would have stayed on the same trajectory back then, which we've seen some improvement, even making the decision back then to open up in May would have allowed for a second peak. We don't know that that would still be the case. We have to wait a couple more weeks to be able to advise the mayor on that decision. We do know that right now, allowing social gatherings would be harmful to our community, because we still have too many people who are susceptible to the virus in our community. We also know that we can advise that as we do reopen, that there should be some social distancing measures that remain in place. So this is the discussion we have about when we return to normal. We want to get to a new normal and not just going back to the way things were. The next thing that we understand is that we get really good benefits as we reopen, that we should keep telework in place for as long as possible, and we also want to be sure to protect our most vulnerable residents for an extended period of time. The last thing that I will highlight for people is that we talk very much about maintaining or seeing a decrease in the number of new cases, seeing a decrease in the number of amount of symptoms that people have for a two-week period of time. But we also want to be mindful of how our hospitals and healthcare systems are tracking, as well as making sure that we have the amount of personal protective equipment, and that everybody who needs to be tested or has symptoms or has been in close contact with people can be tested. So we've outlined 11 metrics that we're going to be following in order to be able to make some decisions about reopening. And well, this information has been shared with the advisory group, and we wanted to have the opportunity to talk with you all about it this afternoon. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Nesbit, for that presentation and for the background that you've been sharing with us, as well as with the advisory group. And it's important to recognize that you have staff from DC Health on all of the committees, advising them from a public health perspective about what is possible and how to make sure that what we do is safe. So before going on to talk a little bit about Reopen DC, I just want to remind everybody on the phone to please press zero if you have a question or something to share with the mayor. We will be going to the phone lines in just a short minute after I share with you a little bit more about what Reopen DC is all about. As the mayor and our chairs shared, Reopen DC is thinking about how do we open the city in an equitable and resilient way that is also driven by data and our health metrics and is deliberate. It takes the best advice from the Johns Hopkins University guidelines to say that we have to do this together as a community, which is one of the reasons we're here today, but also why the mayor set up her advisory group. So how do we do it? As was shared just a second ago by Dr. Nesbit, there are the different phases of reopening. The Johns Hopkins University report calls this the stabilization phase. We call it reopening. But it really is about how do we begin to open up our businesses, our public facilities in a way that respects, or that is about public health. And so that is what we're talking about now. The Johns Hopkins University report makes some recommendations about public health that DC Health has looked at, and it also makes some recommendations about how to go about thinking about opening up DC, or opening up a city. So it's important to note, it's been said, but I will just say it again because it cannot be said enough, the how of when we open is determined by our public health officials and our public health metrics. It is about those indicators that Dr. Nesbit mentioned. But it's also important to note that we have to be ready when it happens. So in a world in which we hit those metrics, but we don't necessarily, we haven't necessarily prepared our facilities or our businesses, then they won't be ready to open. And that question of how we open and how do we prepare to reopen is what Reopen DC is all about. Following in the guidance of Johns Hopkins University report, we will be, the mayor has decided to convene an advisory group of community officials across a steering committee and 11 different, what we are calling, sector committees, that will deliver to her a report in May that talks about three things. Number one is how do we take this, use this opportunity to make sure we address our values and our principles as a city and our priorities as a city. Number two is learning from the best. Lots of other cities, states, and countries are thinking about these very questions. Lots of universities and businesses and business groups are as well. This is a chance to bring all of that to bear and make sure that we, as district government, as district businesses, and district residents, have the best information and are prepared to use it. And finally, it's about some very specific mitigation guidelines, thinking about what are the requirements for a retailer to open? What are the requirements for a park to reopen? What will those look like? We have some examples already from businesses that still operate, including grocery stores and farmers' markets. But how will that apply across the city? So the goal is to produce a plan for the mayor this month. We've been guided, the mayor has set forth four big values to guide us: health, opportunity, prosperity, and equity. And I really think the first one and the last one are key anchors. We have to do, we have to address these in a way that addresses public health, also that consider the equity and the impacts of health and the disparate impacts of health in our city. And that's why equity is another critical anchor. As we rebuild, as we reopen and we recover, we need to address not only the negative impacts of this particular event, but the negative impacts, really, of a history in the District of Columbia. But the other two, opportunity and prosperity, those are about reopening. We know that the best way to get our businesses back is to have them open, have people visit them, have people spend their money, employ us and the residents. So that is what opportunity and prosperity are about. And prosperity is saying that we were prosperous, we are prosperous, but we need to find a new prosperity. We need to find a new way to fill that budget gap so that we can invest in critical resources across the city, whether they be schools, or social services, or roads. This is just a slide that talks about the different elements of what mitigation guidelines might look like, everything from physical distancing to personal protective equipment to even the way that people interact and act. And so we will be asking the committees to look at these types of guidelines and tell us what we should be looking at across all the different sectors in the city. Now, the advisory group, as was shared, has our distinguished chairs, Ambassador Susan Rice and Secretary Michael Chertoff. It also has six co-chairs that the mayor mentioned. Each co-chair is leading two different sector committees, and there are 11 of them. I will read them for those on the phone. Real estate and construction, transportation and infrastructure, health innovation and workforce, open spaces and recreation, education and childcare, restaurants and food, this is a long one, faith, arts, culture, hotels, sports, and entertainment. Then we have small businesses and retail. We have human services, social services, and health. And we round out our last two, our government ops, public, safety, and criminal justice is one, and the final, but not the least, is equity and vulnerable populations. Two of these, equity and vulnerable populations, and health innovation and workforce, really are meant to work across all of those different sectors. And we want to make sure that every committee thinks about some of the issues related to equity, related equity, related to vulnerable populations, and finds those innovations that we might be able to deploy as we reopen. So the committees have begun meeting, but what they, one of the biggest questions that we've heard from all of the committees is what do DC residents and businesses, uh, and workers think? Uh, so that's why we're here today, but as importantly, it's why we have a survey, um, that the mayor spoke about. You can take it at coronavirus.dc.gov/reopendc. There's an opportunity to share with us your big ideas, your thoughts about our, how we open within line with our values. There are also, uh, a set of questions if you want to send specific ideas or thoughts to any of those committees that I mentioned. And we will be sharing those with the committees as they prepare their reports for the mayor. So with that, I will, uh, wrapped, wrapped it up. Uh, there's a great, a good, a lot more detail, a good amount of detail, uh, on coronavirus.dc.gov about all, everything from our emergency response to the public health metrics. There's a great deal of data. And there is also our Reopen DC, um, site that has all of this information for you as well. So I encourage you to visit it.
Well, thank you, uh, Andrew, for that. And we have, uh, more than 3,000 residents who are listening on the conference line. Um, many people will follow us live on Twitter or Facebook at Mayor Bowser. And I also want to thank WJLA for taking us live at 5:00 PM, um, so that DC residents can, um, could hear from the, from the chairs. So now it's time to take your questions. Uh, remember to press zero. Uh, and I think now we have Dr. Imani Woody from Ward Five with our first question.
Hello, hello. Yes. Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead with your question, uh, Imani.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bowser. First, I want to say thank you for doing a remarkable job for responding to COVID-19 and, um, uh, taking such good care of Washington DC in general and elders in particular. I, along with many of our constituents, acknowledge your superior competence and dedication to our city. So, uh, that being said, I want to also say that I have a couple of observations and suggestions regarding the opening up DC for older adults and elders.
Okay, please go.
As you can imagine, many of us are, are, uh, frightened about this happening. I know that the Department of Aging and Community Living has set up a call number for seniors facing isolation. And this is great. However, many seniors suffering from loneliness and/or depression are not likely to call that number. Mary House for Older Adults has been calling elders on a weekly basis. And so I'd like to suggest that during this reopening, that DACO do something similar and have their partners, Sea Berry Iona, do wellness check-in calls to seniors on their list, and, and we can help them. Uh, secondly, I'd like to thank Dr. Nesbit and her team for their Herculean effort. I would encourage DC Health to push health providers to create a campaign that encourages seniors, LGBTQ seniors in particular, to utilize telehealthcare. Many elders are hesitant to trust just anyone with their personal health on the phone. A culturally competent campaign targeting seniors, LGBT seniors in particular, would go a long way to bring us to the new age of wellness. And if we won't go out, we need medical care to come to us, and the safest way seems to be through telehealth. And the last thing is about online access and seniors not having access to tablets. Uh, we've set up some online training for Zoom for seniors that has been well attended and very popular, helping with connections and reducing social isolation. But I'm wondering if it's possible to partner with Google or Microsoft to get tablets for seniors? This would greatly reduce isolation. And again, we can work with DACO Library on teaching them how to access Zoom. This is particularly important to seniors of color and others who continue to suffer from this great digital divide.
Well, Dr. Woody.
Thank you so much for what you're.
Thank you. I think you, um, highlighted some very critical issues, and we're gonna take, um, that, uh, advice to DACO. Uh, I think they're doing some outbound calls, but I, it is a great opportunity for us to look at more proactively, um, reaching out to seniors. Uh, it sounds like you are aware of some of the changes that we've made regarding reimbursements for telehealth, and a lot of people are using it, but, uh, how we, um, better do outreach and education around telehealth, it could be important. I wanted to pause on your recommendation about tablets, um, because it's an important one. We have done a lot in talking about tablets and access for children, um, but I think that you point, uh, to, uh, another vulnerable population of seniors who may, uh, not have access to the web. And so I want to make sure that we are, um, discussing that in, uh, our, our group on seniors and vulnerable populations, um, but also thinking about it as a, a innovation where, that we can invest in in our recovery. Uh, let's go now to Tracy in Ward Seven. Hi, Tracy.
Hi, how are you?
Great.
Tracy Spandelli, Washington DC, Ward Seven resident. I want to thank you, Mayor Bowser, your staff, and your team for a yeoman's job and tireless work in keeping our DC residents and employees safe and informed, and for putting together a phenomenal task group or, um, advisory group to help us reopen it equitably. I want to know, though, how will the summer youth employment program be phased in or affected along with, I think, uh, you said that students may have to attend summer school?
Well, uh, thank you for that question. And I know that summer is on everybody's mind, uh, and we are hoping that by mid-May, by May 15th, we will be able to provide an update on a range of summer activities. Uh, so that would include summer school, whether it be in-person or remote, or remote. Um, also, we, we, we hope to be able to say more about our facilities, recreation facilities and the like, uh, summer camps. Um, so we continue to look to the Department of Health to let us know where we are in the city and what we will be able to do. In the meantime, the advisory group will be working on, uh, if we're, none of us expect that we will be able to go back to the way, exactly the way things were, um, when we left them, like last summer. Um, so we'll be looking to the, that advisory group on open spaces and recreation, for example, um, to give us some recommendations on phasing in, uh, those activities that we're looking forward to. So that's a long way to say, expect us to update you on summer activities in mid-May. Uh, now, Dr. Morris Hughes, uh, was here recently. You asked about our summer youth program, where, uh, we give, uh, 12,000 kids a paid six-week job, uh, every summer, uh, which is very important to us. And we are both looking, um, at remote and in-person opportunities for the summer youth program. So DOES is very focused on that, uh, and planning for that, and we'll have an update in mid-May. Jan in Ward Four. Jan?
Yes. Um, I was asking, um, about, uh, older workers returning to, uh, work in the DC government. What protections will be put in place, uh, in that we're sitting in a cubicle-type of format?
And that's. That's a very good question, uh, Jan. Jan's question was about, uh, how will DC government workers, um, come back to in-person, um, work? And her's question was specifically was about older workers. Um, our Human Resources Department now is investigating all of the ways that we could phase people back, um, to, to their desk, um, when, when the time comes. And, uh, you heard Dr. Nesbit already mention, uh, that part of, um, the way that we've contained the virus is not having everybody travel, um, to, to their desk. Um, 60% of DC government is now on telework. Uh, earlier, uh, the Governor of Maryland and the Governor of Virginia and I sent a letter to the Office of Personnel Management encouraging them to keep as many people in the federal government also teleworking. Um, so we are, um, going to continue to examine, um, all of the jobs and tasks that can, that can stay on telework longer. Uh, we will also be looking at workers that as we reopen and have more, um, work to be done, um, in the workplace, um, that will, that will come back in to do that. Uh, and this is a brand-new question for us. Um, how do we make sure that we're treating, um, our employees fairly, that we're not discriminating against our employees, that we have all the appropriate, uh, leave available, uh, and how do we phase in that work? So all of those things are being examined. Um, I also expect the Workforce Sector Committee, uh, to give us that advice, but also to tell private employers, uh, to come up with a toolbox, if you will, of resources for employers who are thinking about how to bring their people back to work. But thank you for that question, uh, and just know that we're giving it a lot of attention. Uh, Ellen from Ward One.
Hi, thank you for taking my, my question, and thank you to the mayor for all your work keeping us safe. Um, I'm a resident of Ward One, and I work, um, I think it's Ward Two, uh, 400 North Capitol Street. I work for a television network. And we, of course, are teleworking right now, and my company, as most companies in DC, are trying to figure out how to, how to plan to safely get us back to work. So my question is, do you think at some point asymptomatic people will be tested for antibodies to see if perhaps we've already had it, and then we could feel confident about going back to work?
Well, thank you for that question. I'm gonna, uh, turn to Dr. Nesbit, who with her colleague at the Department of Forensic Sciences, Dr. Jennifer Smith, uh, have been, uh, really working on our testing strategies. Uh, and you, of course, like everybody, have been listening to all the different, um, commentary out there, and, um, I think what we all know is that nobody's really settled on what it means to be immune, uh, to COVID-19, but we're certainly continue to aggressively, uh, investigate that. So I'm gonna turn to Dr. Nesbit, but I also want to, uh, invite the co-chairs to jump in on any of these questions. Um, Dr. Nesbit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, and thank you for the question and the opportunity to talk more about, uh, expanding access to testing and the right types of testing for people. Uh, we know that there are many, uh, individuals in our community who are asymptomatic, uh, who have not experienced any symptoms of COVID-19, uh, but who may have questions about whether or not they have been exposed to SARS-CoV-2, uh, the virus that causes, um, COVID-19. As the mayor has explained, uh, the science is still unsettled or unclear about what it means to have antibodies to SARS-CoV-2. Uh, if that means that you have immunity and cannot be infected and get the disease COVID-19, uh, or if you have those antibodies and if you are immune, how long that immunity lasts? Uh, that being said, we are planning to do antibody testing here in the District of Columbia. Uh, we are hopeful that we will be able to begin that antibody testing with a test that is of high quality. Um, there was some concerns about the initial test that came on the market. Uh, some of those tests were of poor quality. Uh, while they tested for some coronaviruses, it was not this specific coronavirus, and some of those tests were also found to be contaminated. Uh, so there is a test, uh, that received, uh, the FDA's approval, uh, for use this weekend that we have a high level of confidence in, and will be making available in the district, um, possibly as early as the end of next week or, uh, by the second week of May.
Thank you, Dr. Nesbit. Let's go to Brenda in Ward Eight.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you for the great job that you're doing. Um, my question is in regard to a, um, social distancing campaign to reimagine DC and social responsibility. I, um, have noticed, and the other thing is looking at no loitering legislation. When I travel in Ward Eight, there's full lots of people on the street. And secondly, I'm also seeing a police, more of a military presence over here. I went to the Safeway today, and there was MPD, the National Guard, and the post office had police as well. So rather than having a military presence to enforce social distancing, would you consider social distancing ambassadors?
Um, well, thank you for that question, Brenda. And it's certainly, um, a, a balance, uh, to be struck, and I want you to know how sensitive I am to that balance. Uh, we are asking people, and I've said from the outset, that our goal is not to involve our police, um, our goal is for people to follow the rules. Um, and our police have been nudging people and reminding people, um, of those rules. Uh, and that is also a job that I ask the National Guard to do, especially around grocery stores. Um, I don't have to tell you how, how important it is that we keep our grocery workers safe and access to food, um, safe. Um, so we're asking all, everybody who goes to a grocery store to wear a face covering. Um, so that's, that's all, um, that you've seen, uh, and I hope that everybody's been friendly and, uh, giving friendly reminders, but that's the point. Um, but also, um, is the point that, uh, people are not gathering, uh, in large groups or loiter, or loitering, uh, and we, they will be asked to move along as well for their own safety, uh, and for the safety of the community. But your, your recommendation about ambassadors or a less, uh, uh, uniformed presence is noted, uh, and we will keep that in mind. Uh, and I think now we have Isaiah, a student government, uh, representative from Roosevelt Senior High School.
Yes. Um, so first of all, before I get into my suggestion for the school, for the plan for, I think the plan should, what the plan should be for sixth graders and ninth graders, um, for this upcoming school year, I would say thank you, um, protecting the city, taking on to all the necessary precautions, uh, to prevent, uh, a bigger outbreak, a wider spread outbreak, um, of the pandemic itself already.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you're welcome. So my learning, so throughout my learn, so my four years, I'm a senior, uh, this year, I'm graduating, I got, I'm going, I got a full ride to American University.
Yay, that's my alma mater.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, my, so, uh, like throughout my learning and cultural experience throughout Roosevelt High School, I would hate for a student, especially going into the ninth grade, but also those kids that's going from elementary to middle, students that go into a new setting. I will, I, I would just, I would just, I would just hate the idea of them not getting or gaining the full, the full experience and not receiving enough, uh, attention, uh, due to, due to some circumstances that are uncontrollable, such as COVID-19, the pandemic. So what I was thinking, I had a suggestion. I was thinking maybe we, we could do possibly a virtual summer bridge program, um, containing, you know, that contains, uh, enrichment, uh, team-building activities for the ninth and sixth graders primarily because they're going into new settings. I think, and it was, it was, like I say, I, I would just hate the fact that they wouldn't gain the full experience, the full exposure of their new setting. So I just think, I think a virtual summer bridge would, uh, help, because I'm, I'm going through the same thing, going through my, going through American University orientation process where it's, it's being done a little bit differently than it would be in normal years.
Well, I love the way you're thinking, Isaiah. Very astute, um, recommendation, uh, and congratulations on your graduation. I'm sorry that you didn't get to spend the last months of your senior year with your colleagues, um, but we are gonna work with DC Public Schools, um, to recognize our seniors in some way, and maybe it's in a few months when we all can get back together again. But I just wanted to say, uh, congratulations. Uh, and let me also tell you, then I think I'm gonna turn to Ambassador Rice. I know she's also very focused on education issues. Um, that the advisory committee is being led by Deputy Mayor Kine, uh, and, um, and is up by, and by Charlene Drew Jarvis, uh, gonna focus on education. And they are, like you, are very concerned about how to, to bridge, especially kids that are transitioning, uh, and kids that are in very important years for learning how to read, transitioning into middle and high school, uh, and how, uh, those kids are being served. So I expect some recommendations from them around that. They're also looking at if they can have in-person summer school and if more kids will be able to participate, uh, and also, um, starting, uh, the school year a little bit earlier, uh, and if not for all students, for some students, in the way that you describe as a bridge into the next, um, year. into the next year. So that is just, those are some things that people are thinking about. But it sounds like the model, the summer bridge model that a lot of universities use could be a good model for us to follow. Ambassador Rice, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Isaiah, for great suggestions, and congratulations on your graduation, and I'm, look forward to seeing you on AU campus as well. I, I think your idea of paying particular attention to, to students in transition is a really helpful one. And one of the challenges we may have, particularly in the early stages, is it may not be possible for everybody to be in one place at the same time as, as schools, you know, go through a phase process to reopen. And so understanding the particular needs of those that are, you know, in those, that very fragile category where they haven't formed their social units and their teachers and everything are new, is, is a very useful guidepost for us. So I thank you, and we'll, we'll certainly incorporate your thought into our, our work on the Education Subcommittee.
Thank you for that. And I think we have a couple more questions, one from Emily from Ward Three. Emily, are you there?
Hello, Mayor Bowser.
Hi.
Yes, I'm here. Hello, Mayor Bowser. Thank you very much for your work that you've put in. I can tell you that I really appreciate the work of your communications team, the materials that have been coming out on coronavirus.dc.gov have been outstanding.
Thank you, I do too. They're working super hard.
Yeah. No, it was very detailed, and I really appreciate that it's all in one place, and it's very easy to understand. So, I'm coming from the standpoint of property management. I helped manage a building in downtown DC, and we, most of our tenants use the Metro. And so I'm calling mostly the Metro focus. You know, our building has been making this, doing the same types of planning that you're doing for the citywide, we're doing building-wide. So we'll be, you know, in, in step with the city as you start to allow people to come back.
Okay.
But we'd like to know a little bit about Metro.
Well, I appreciate that. And Paul Wiedefeld, who is the General Manager for Metro, will be participating in the Transportation and Infrastructure Advisory Committee. I know that Metro is working very hard on phasing plans as well, and we look forward to them sharing that with our advisory group. Metro, of course, is powered by people, and how they keep their essential workers safe is, is critically important to how we come back. So the types of questions that we're asking about testing and PPE and how people access the, the buses and trains is critically important as well. Metro plays a role in moving workers, moving our students, and moving our essential workers. So it's very critical to how that, that will happen. So I will look forward to the, the General Manager having all of the information from us. His operations, and you've seen over the response to the pandemic, Metro operations have stepped down according to ridership. So a lot of what we do around bringing workers back, they can amp up their ridership as long as they're able to provide a safe environment for Metro's workers. Secretary Chertoff, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I think obviously the question of keeping both the people working on Metro and the buses and the passengers safe is very, very important. And I think a lot of it will depend upon issues like, how do you regulate how full vehicles get? Are there issues of times of the day that are more intense than others? And I think this is an area I think we're particularly focused on, because we want to make sure people have the ability to get to work or do essential things, but not in a way that jeopardizes them or others using transportation.
Okay, very good, thank you. And I think there's a lot of opportunity to, as we reopen, especially in transportation and infrastructure, to think about a new normal. And so I have challenged that committee and the others to think about opportunities that we have to, to bring back these services and people in a way that continues to be good for our environment and, and moving around the city. Leslie from Ward Five.
Hi, Mayor. I just wanted to say as well, thank you so much to you and your team and everyone else who has been working so diligently on making sure the community is safe. My question is about your closure of non-essential businesses with the deadline of May 15. Now hearing the conversation, it sounds like there, it may be possible that you all may extend this, and I wonder if there will be an announcement on whether there will be an extension of the May 15 deadline.
Yes, Leslie. So we would be looking, and I don't think that we would be able to make any announcements about May 15, long before May 15. When we extended the last public health emergency, I think we had about a week in advance. And if it is very clear a week out that we're, we're not going to see consistent declines in, in our experience with COVID, with our number of positive cases, I may be able to announce it early. But if it looks, if it's more in a gray area, I would likely wait. But again, don't anticipate, in, in either case, a light switch going on and everything going back to normal. At that point, we would likely be only recommending, if we were able, some small portion of activity coming back. So with that, we are now at the end of our appointed time. I want to thank Secretary Chertoff and Ambassador Rice, all of the co-chairs who participated, and all of you, over 3,000 people listening on the line, watching on our cable channels and following on Twitter. If you still have questions, please give us a, a tweet with hashtag DC Hope, and our team will be getting back to you. And also, please complete the survey. I think when I walked in the room, we were at almost 4,000 responses to the survey, and that is another great way to let us know what you're thinking. Those results will be shared with the committee and all DC leaders who are helping us through this pandemic. I also, I know that Chairman Mendelson is on the call and is on our steering committee, and I want to thank all the members of the council who have been so helpful in all of their areas of oversight and leadership in their wards and in passing two very consequential pieces of legislation that are helping us respond to this pandemic. Thank you, everybody.